It being six thirty PM on Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty four, I'll hereby call the regular meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call their own.
Mrs. Cormier.
Present.
Mrs. Hurst.
Present.
Mr. LaFreniere.
Present.
Mrs. Ward Layton.
Present.
Mrs. Palavan.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
And Mark Pellegrino.
Present.
And the student rep is absent. All present.
Thank you very much. At this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. High Pledge of Allegiance.
In the land of the states of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, united God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will note for the record that due to a technical difficulty, this meeting will not be broadcasted live, but it is being recorded and will be later broadcasted on Channel eight G T V and posted to the city's YouTube page. Our first item on the agenda is open time for the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, moving on to item C, recognitions by the superintendent for the fourth grade student council for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Dr. Pellegrino.
So, school committee, this is one of my favorite meetings where we really get to recognize some of our leaders in the district, some of our student leaders. These are our fourth graders who are on the student council and have been lucky enough to actually, hopefully, most of them have been in the new school now for two years, so they've gotten that, that experience of new school. But what's, now they're going up to the middle school next year, so these folks really want to recognize them because typically they do a lot of work. This particular group did a lot of work, a lot of very significant projects. Actually, this is Ms. Tovacinsky. She's actually, could you tell a little about some of the projects they did?
Sure. So, I am one of the co-advisors. Christine Rayner is the other co-advisor. She wasn't able to make it tonight, but some of the projects that they were able to do is they did a food drive, they did a toy drive, they did a blanket drive, so they did three drives this year. They also helped parent teacher conferences. They helped with the PBIS carnival last week with the younger grades. They made positive couches for PBIS. They also, ooh, just, oh, we had a lunch with the mayor at Dunn's Park. And they were student helpers in classes pre-K through grade three, just helping with academics and assisting in the classroom.
So I think they deserve a round of applause, first of all. And what we'd like to do now is recognize them with a certificate for their, for their hard work.
Dr. Pellegrino, while you get the certificates ready, I will say from that lunch that we had at Dunn Park, I was very impressed by all of the questions that the students asked about the city. They were a lot more detailed than I would have asked when I was a fourth grade student, and I was very, you know, proud and impressed by each and every one of you who's in this room. So thank you very much and keep that work up when you move up to the middle school and continue here at, you know, Gardner Public Schools and wherever you go to after. We've got a great, really bright group of students in this room right now. I'm really proud of you all. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks. So when I call on your name, what I'd like you to do is just come up and receive your certificate, get used to this, because you're probably going to be doing this a lot during your time at Gardner Public Schools, especially being the leaders that you are. The way you receive your certificate, everyone hold the right hand, right? Right? That's the hand that you shake my hand with. Left hand, you take the certificate with. So I'm gonna hand you the certificate, you grab the certificate, we shake hands. So get used to that, because it's probably gonna happen a lot in the next several years.
And for the parents and guests who are here too, after the certificates are given out, the meeting will take a brief recess. We'll gather out in the hallway and take a group picture together too.
All right. So now, and I might not pronounce your names properly, rest assured, when you graduate from Gardner Public Schools, we will call up your name absolutely correctly. So I apologize and you can correct me and make fun of me when you come up here if I address your name, okay? So the first person I'd like to call up is Jason Delavalle. Alexiana Draper. Emma Eddie. Gabriella Eden. Cecilia. Cecilia Jimenez. Audrey Healy. Delaney Copolas. Cora Leyton. Henry Tebow. Stephen Boslin. Get used to that too. Haley Presenian. Chris Klempner. And now just for some students who aren't here tonight but are on the student council, I'm just gonna call up their names and give a round of applause to the end. Leila Chaffey. Caleb Clark. Aria, Aria Forbes. Jayden Pearson. Dylan Huntoon Walsh. Hunter Kawakinen. Paisley Moran. Vivian Nilson. Genesis Ramos. Karas Salama. Karas Salama. And Gabriella Scale. All right, now what we'd like to do is.
The meeting will stand in a brief recess. The students will gather out in front of the maroon curtain out in the hallway and we'll take a group picture. Thank you.
That they don't feel like his honor is an AP. And it gives them the skills to be prepared to go into this program. We're really excited about this. So we'll have twenty students in the ninth grade, twenty students in the tenth grade, who will be in this early college bridge. The state calls it early, early college. I think that sounds terrible. So open the suggestions some ways. So that's going to be taught by Ms. Otino. It'll be taught actually through Mount Wauttusit credentials. So this will allow our ninth and tenth grade students to like learn how to use Blackboard, learn how to use iConnect, all those really fun things that we have to do junior year at the beginning of it. They will have all these skills, learn how to appropriately write essays and emails to professors and develop these kind of college and career skills in under, you know, in those underclassmen and grade levels. So by the time they get ready to start thinking about college and career applying into these programs, they're hopefully more prepared. And then we will also be adding in our MVP program. So we had orientation this past week with Fitchburg and Gansett. So all the students were there. So we have, that is full across the board. We currently have a waitlist of five students for the Gardner sections. Fitchburg is slightly under-enrolled. So we have an ad drop here at the beginning of the year, and we may be able to fill some Fitchburg spots with our waitlist if that, if that works out. So we will have twenty students total, ten in carpentry, ten in electrical, and they will be in for a nine hundred and ninety hour vocational training program with Monty Tech. So that'll be a really exciting program for our students who are not looking to do post-secondary, you know, post-secondary in regards to traditional four-year. Our demographics that I did want to share out because I was not able to include that in the school committee report. You know, we are really excited with the students who have chose to enroll in this program. So we are, wish I had more females. Fortunately, I have one female out of my twenty. But we are eighty, just under eighty percent of our students are low-income, eleven percent of our students are ELL, and fifty-two percent of our students are currently on IAPs, and about fifty percent had applied to Monty Tech and got denied. So it really showed us that it was the population that we were looking to capture, and students who truly were looking to go into the trades had tried to get into the program or denied from this program. So we are excited to see that this particular group of students is the one who express interest. Yeah, I just threw a lot of data and did the stats at you. Any questions at all or feedback at all?
I just, basically, am just really impressed with everything. There's so many good things happening for our kids here in this district. Thank you for everything you do.
It's fine. I get the best group of students. He can tell you. I just get to annoy them all day long. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll take item three, six, two, eight out of order two for Director McCaffrey to give her a report for the school health services.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me. I want to thank you all again for your continued support of nursing services in our district. We have been really well supported by you guys, and this is why I can share the great work that we've been doing because we have enough nurses. We continued this year our CQI project on multilingual learners and looking at that population and making sure that they're connected to all healthcare indicators, making sure they have a PCP, a dentist, health insurance. So really pulling out that population, looking through their charts, making sure that they're connected so that all their healthcare needs are met because we know that when their healthcare needs are met, then they're better ready to learn and come to school. So we had to develop a poster on that project for DPH because we are a recipient of a DPH grant that we've had for over twenty years in this district. And that's part of what the work that we do for this grant. Our poster was picked out of three out of probably like seventy or eighty ones submitted to highlight at this conference. That was really great. So I did include that in my report, so I'm not gonna go into detail about the whole thing. But I do want to highlight that our goal as our school nurses had a team goal this year to take that population and improve at least by ten percent the amount of students that had access to all of those health indicators. And we smashed that and we raised it by twenty-five percent. So we did a really good job. That was a lot of work, and we feel good about that. Also, out of that project, we had identified, of course, we had a increase in our refugee population, right? In the folks at the shelter. So that really increased this project by a lot this year because our numbers in the district of multi-language learners went way up, right? I think we had two hundred and twelve maybe?
Double, yeah, it's double over the last few years.
So this became a much bigger project this year. I just want to mention going through all of those students. When we were working on this, we realized that those students at the shelter did not have access to dental care. And we were able to quickly make sure our forms got translated for our in-school providers because we have smile dentists and caring for kids that come into school and actually provide dental services in school. So even though they didn't have the forms translated in Haitian Creole, we were like, we need these translated right away. We need to work with the liaison. We need to make sure that these kids get signed up so that they can get dental care in school. And they did, and that was really great. Let's see. We also had identified a couple of students that had just come into the district, got identified by actually the ELL teachers, that these kids need glasses. I know they need glasses. I know they can't see. So through some work, especially Tina Russack, which I have a little report at the end. She does a lot of healthcare coordination in our district as the nurse care coordinator. She got right to work on these kids. We screened them. They did fail their vision screenings. We were able to, with the help of the Lions Club, get them transportation to BJ's Optical. They had no medical insurance. BJ's Optical did the eye exam there. Then when it was time that the glasses came in, they actually came to the middle school and did the fitting and everything right at the middle school. So that was a great community partnership that really helped these kids. Let's see. So I have a little bit of data to share. Eighty-two percent of our Gardner Public School students accessed the nurse at least one time this year. And more students visited the nurse ten or more times than students that didn't visit the nurse at all. I was like, wow, that's kind of crazy. This next piece of data I have is really important to me, and I look at this every year. What is the time in and out of the health office? Because I want to make sure kids are reading. Because if a kid is down in the health office and they're waiting for a half hour and they're missing their whole math class, that's a big deal. So if you look at this, we can pull reports out of our software system on the time in and timeout. The vast majority of students are in the health office for less than ten minutes. But really, one minute, three minutes, five minutes, they're in and out and they're getting them back to class. And that's great because that's where they need to be, unless they're too sick, and then they're going home. If you see on the other end of that chart, greater than sixty minutes, it's kind of cut off, but that, it kind of spikes up there. And that's because sometimes they can't go back to class, and sometimes they don't have a ride home, and they just have to hang out in the health office for a couple hours. But as you can see, most of the kids are in and out quick. We had eighty-eight percent of health office visits that were able to stay in school. So they came in, they were seen, they were able to stay in school. I'd like that number to be a little bit higher, but there's a lot of reasons why sometimes it just doesn't happen. Let's see. Lots of visits. About ninety-five visits per day on average throughout the district is what the nurses are seeing in the health office. And those visits do not count all the health screenings that we do, that are required by the state of Massachusetts. So that's important to know. On top of the visits, we did four thousand two hundred and seventeen health screenings this year that consist of hearing screening, vision screening, postural screening, which is where we check the back, and height and weight screening. And eighty-one percent of those screenings, if they were identified that they needed a follow-up and they needed to be seen by an outside provider, they were seen and we got that referral back, which is also reported, that we have a high number of that coming back. And then I just have a little report from Tina Russack, who's our nurse care coordinator, of the tremendous work that she does. And I just can't say enough how much all the nurses do. But having this role with our district, again, thank you so much for the support that we get as a nursing team because the things that we're able to do for students and how we connect them and how we better their outcomes is phenomenal. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Great job, Courtney. End of team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll take item number three, six, two, nine out of order. Our grant administrator's update, Director Dunn.
Hello. Glad to be here. Thanks for having me. So in your report, I provided some more detailed financial information about each individual grant and sort of the priorities that each grant addresses. But here, I'll give just some more general information. So the FY twenty-four grant funding total was about two point nine million dollars, which consists of both entitlement and competitive funding, which is broken down a little bit more in your report. But it's nice to note that even though like our priorities shift based on our district needs every year and the available funding sources through DESI and other sources, that we've stayed pretty consistent with our grant funding year-over-year since FY twenty-two in the kind of post-COVID era. That total of funding does not include SRR three and improving ventilation and air quality grant funding, which is for a very, very specific project and still remains just through this fall. But our entitlement grants, as always, help the district supplement the local funding for services that relate to everything from literacy to preschool to professional development. ESL services that supports so many different programs throughout the district. And so we just strategically plan annually throughout the summer and then just kind of continue moving forward just based on what competitive priorities come up through our grant makers. The district, this year's priorities also included early college, which you've heard a lot about, Innovation Pathways funding from Melissa. We also had some competitive funding to help support six teachers completing their ESL certifications this year to help further just support in the gen ed classes our teachers that are able to better support our multilingual learners. And then also just create a pipeline for the future that if we have any retirements or anyone leave the district, we have six people on the bench just waiting for those roles. We also had some competitive funding for behavioral health workforce development, which helped with some professional development and also a crisis response RBT position at the elementary school. We had some funding in support of our homeless student population at the emergency shelter, which was really helpful to help meet some of their needs. And then also funding to support research and development, professional development for a new history curriculum, which is something that DESI has created as a priority. We're also, this is, FY twenty-four is also the final year of two of our three-year grants that we've been working on for a few years now. So our mental and behavioral health grant, which you guys know as the three-three-two grant or three-eleven grant, which has supported a lot of growth in our mental health programming in all buildings through technical assistance with the May Institute and also professional and curriculum development in our mental and behavioral health programs. The other grant closing this year is the Barr Foundation grant that supported our professional development for our district and building administration, as well as teacher leaders in both Gardner Public Schools and Lomond School Public Schools and then district and building administration in Winston and Public Schools. As the lead district, we are currently in the works of looking at the next funding source with the Barr Foundation and hope that we can continue this pipeline. We've seen a lot of great progress. We just underwent a sort of progress monitoring study with attuned education partners to really look at what we've done so far, where we are right now, and kind of what our next three years look like. And so we're in that process. In the summer, we'll finalize kind of our next step strategically and then also how, basically writing the proposal and what, you know, our continuation with Lomond School and Winston and kind of how those priorities fit together and then different things that we can do separately to continue supporting that work for, as the lead district for all three of those. I know before I mentioned that the SRR funding is not included in the total. That's because we are closing that grant. So that has to be allocated by September thirtieth. So we are ending our COVID funding. We have to liquidate by December thirty-first. We are able to apply for late liquidation if the project that this is slated towards goes overtime. So we're kind of working on working directly with the business offices to kind of sort through that right now. We are losing three and a half million dollars worth of funding to support the HVAC project at the high school, which you guys are very well familiar with. And so in the event that the project is not complete, we do have some time to continue to liquidate the funds beyond December thirty-first as long as we apply and are approved with the federal government. And then lastly, just over the summer, we always strategize on our FY twenty-five entitlement grants and then continue to just identify our district priorities for other competitive funding opportunities that might come up. And so we always look for feedback on programs that we have, and we're grateful to everything that you guys do to help support those initiatives. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Great job, Courtney. Yes, thank you. Money coming.
I just want to say Director Dunn and I met with our city's grant writers last week. And in the feedback I had from the debrief, from meeting with all the different departments that we met to that day, even they were very impressed with how much, you know, Courtney, you really just do for the district. A lot of different places have individuals who, you know, you look at a grant application, sometimes it's, you know, it's black and white, and then there's other times it's gray in the middle. And sometimes it's a little both. And Courtney's, you know, realizing that grant writers even said this too, that, you know, you just ask the right questions and put the questions out there. And for every question, you're just going to get to the root of the problem. And, you know, those gray roots, you fill in a little bit, and you get that black and white answer, and that's where you get to go from the end. So just thank you very much for everything that's going on. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Courtney.
Dr. Pellegrino, it's one of the best things you did, is to chase her out of your office and put her in the grant program.
All right, moving back to the top of the agenda, item, item D, the consent agenda. This was included in your packet. Is there a motion on the floor?
So what?
Motion made by Miss LaFreniere. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Miss LaFreniere, second by Mrs. Ward-Layton. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Next item, reports of the subcommittee's finance subcommittee, Miss LaFreniere.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The finance subcommittee met on Wednesday, June sixth. As usual, we just reviewed the expense report. And we had just various questions. We're kind of closing everything out now. Pretty much we're all answered. Ms. Plaiven brought up a line item, our IT line item was unusually negative. Mr. Hock was looking into it, but he believes that the charge, bills were charged to this account that would have gone to the E-Rate account. Checking into that. We also, let me see. Ms. Plaiven asked if there were any outstanding legal bills. Mr. Hock did not believe there to be, but would double-check on that. And, you know, we do have a spending freeze in effect. So that slowed down the increase in the negative, for the negative line items. We also reviewed pictures of the work that's being done in the auditorium at the high school. Pretty impressive. They built a whole subfloor in there. That was really cool. I actually want to go see it in person, but that was neat. And also, at the end of the meeting, we also were presented with an item of, from the ID department, a list of items from the IT department that were declared surplus. These items, all these items have been harvested for any salvageable materials on them. So we can use them to repair other things. So whatever was left over is now declared surplus. And that was pretty much the end of the meeting. But if I could, I would, I'd like to make a motion. Everyone received a list of the surplus items in their packet. And I'd like to make a motion that we declare the items listed as surplus.
Oh, second time.
Motion by Miss LaFreniere, second by Mr. Schwartz, to declare those items as listed in the packet as surplus. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
That was it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is the policy subcommittee report. Mrs. Hurst.
We met on May fifteenth, and tonight there's seven policies for first read. We have IJOA field trips, IMGA service animals in schools, JI students' rights and responsibilities, JICFA hazing. JICAFE is hazing. JICH alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited, and JIE pregnant students. So those are just for your information. I would like to say though too that the policy subcommittee, I wanted to thank everybody for all their hard work. We've been able to keep up to date with a lot of the stuff, even the things that the state has sent us. And Dr. Gogan has been instrumental in keeping us on track and up to date. And I know that some people think that policy probably isn't, you know, a really wonderful thing. But it's very important, and there's so many different pieces to it. And we have to collaborate with special education or Nurse McCaffrey, you know, people for different reasons. And everybody has just really stepped up, and we've been able to do a really good job. So thank you to my fellow school committee people who are on the committee with me.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns on that report? Moving on to item F, Xavier. And thank you, Mrs. Hurst. I meant to say that to you.
I want to start off by congratulating our May Wildcat winners, Tasha Awoki, Cameron Sepa, Travon Murchison, James Gray, and Quentin Walker. I want to thank them for being such great Gardner High School citizens and representing our core values so well. The all-school art exhibit was held May first in the high school gym. Students from all grades were able to display their wonderful artwork. The Gardner High School prom was held at the Colonial Hotel on May tenth, and two hundred and fifty students attended. The students all looked amazing, and a great time was had by all. The music boosters held their annual theme basket extravaganza on May eleventh. Turnout was great, and they were able to make a lot of money to put back into our music program. Seniors from the class twenty twenty-four went on a field trip to Chuckster's on May fourteenth. They were able to participate in all kinds of events, activities, eat good food, and hang out with friends on a beautiful day. Gardner Public School was awarded the site partner of the year award by Mount Wauttusit Community College for all our work with our early college, gateway, and pathways programs. The spring concert was held on May fifteenth, and it looked a little different in the high school gym while our auditorium's HVAC system is being renovated. But the band and chorus sounded as good as ever. A group of our robotic students competed in the annual robotics competition on May sixteenth and won the judges' award for design complexity and build quality. On May seventeenth, our multilingual learners went on a field trip to the Southwick Zoo. Most had never been to a zoo before, and they had a wonderful time seeing and learning about all the new animals. Gardner High School welcomed all seventh-grade students to the high school on May twenty-fourth for tours. Students were able to see the building, meet teachers, and learn about our different clubs and offerings. The annual varsity athletic banquet was held at City Hall Auditorium on May twenty-fourth. Students, coaches, and teams were recognized for their accomplishments throughout all three seasons. This event went really well, and auditorium was filled with athletes and their families. Gardner High School, Gardner Middle School, and Gardner Elementary School went to the Special Olympics. Our band played, and students cheered as the students left for the event. This is always a great day for our students and their best buddies. Senior activities include bass and baccarat. Senior barbecue and a bagel breakfast, and they were all held the week before graduation. These are always fun events for all our seniors. The Gardner High School graduation for the class of twenty twenty-four was held June first, or June first. One hundred and twenty seniors graduated. It was a great day for the students, their families, and the school staff.
Thank you, Xavier. Any questions, comments, concerns? Good job. Moving on in the agenda, item number three, six, two, three. Ms. Hurst mentioned this earlier. These policies were included in your packet for first read and information for a vote at our next meeting in September. So we will deal with that at that time. Is there a question, Ms. Hurst? Oh, I thought you wanted to say something.
No, I just was like, I couldn't figure out what you were doing.
No, just saying, in your packet, no vote tonight. Vote at the next meeting.
All right.
No, that was on me. I was saying it confusing because I was thinking ahead.
Sorry for doping off.
No, hear me. Item number three, six, two, four, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar. This was included in your packet and requires a vote this evening. Is there a motion on the floor? Mrs. Attorney Plaiven.
I'll make a motion that we change the February fifth half-day to February sixth from the previous calendar vote that we had.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion made by Attorney Plaiven, second by Mrs. Quoimier, to make that amendment to the school calendar. Is there any discussion on that motion?
And we need to make that amendment because of MCAS testing. That day needs to be a full day for the MCAS testing. That's why we had to change it.
Is there any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, six, two, five, superintendent's evaluation. Attorney Plaiven.
So obviously, it's the end of the cycle for the superintendent's evaluation. And of course, we are very lucky to have Dr. Pellegrino as our superintendent. This is the cumulative evaluation. It was the combination and averaged out of everybody's individual evaluations. There's the progress towards the goals, which, as you know, we go over the goals at the beginning of the year, mid-year. And then this is the end of the year review. Overall, we, as a school committee, said that Dr. Pellegrino met his professional practice goal, the student learning goal, the district, and the district improvement goals. And then in regards to the different standards that they ask us to evaluate, overall, Dr. Pellegrino was seen as proficient. We're not really given many options when we're doing this evaluation. But overall, it was a proficient evaluation for Dr. Pellegrino, and I make a motion that we accept the cumulative evaluation as the school committee's evaluation of Dr. Pellegrino.
Motion made by Attorney Plaiven, second by Mr. Schwartz, to accept the evaluation as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Thank you for everything you do, Dr. Pellegrino. Appreciate it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Can I have one more thing?
Yes.
To make a motion that the superintendent receives to raise as per the contract, his contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Plaiven, second by Mrs. Ward-Layton, to grant the superintendent the pay raise associated with his contract and the evaluation that he has received. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the curriculum coordinator update. This was included in your packet for information. Item number three, six, two, seven. Is there any discussion on that motion? Excuse me, discussion on that item? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Dr. Gogan. Moving on to item number three, six, three, zero, special education update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion on that item? Thank you very much, Director West. Next item, three, six, three, one, the special education parents advisory council update. Mrs. Hurst.
They're getting ready to put together a calendar for next year already. They're very proactive. They've been, they've done really well with outreach. And it's, 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 you know, they've been very effective with everything. I did see something about, from another district where they were having pizza with the superintendent. So that like piqued their interest, and Dr. Pellegrino agreed that he would have to consider. So you'll be getting that invitation, I'm sure, at the chair. But, yeah, they've done a really incredible job. I'm very proud of what they've done.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns? Onto item H, communications. Dr. Pellegrino.
You know, I just want to say, I speak with a lot of my colleagues, you know, other superintendents, and comparatively, I've got it easy. I have, I'm saying that with, you know, I have teachers who work really hard. This year was another grind year where we're trying to get kids back on track after COVID and, you know, all the different things. But they're working really hard to meet our kids, to meet our kids' needs. And that, to me, makes my job easier. I have administrators, who we saw three presentations tonight, and I have gung-ho administrators who are always going above and beyond, leading, helping to lead the districts, and together, we're moving the district forward. Our indicators are all going in the right direction. Everything from school choice to MCAS to every indicator that we have, attendance, all of those things. I think we've done a really great job, and that's all because I have their hard work. And then lastly, Um, and then lastly, of course, is the school committee. I mean, I get a lot of support. Um, when I, when you have concerns, you come to me directly. I'm able to address those concerns, hopefully to the best of my ability. But I, I just, this is a great district to work in, and, you know, frankly, I'm just really pleased to be in a district that's moving forward in the way we are. And in the end, we have great kids. So this is just a great place to work for, and I thank you for letting me, um, stay on, and thank you for my evaluation.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns on Dr. Pellegrino's report? Thanks for being our super. Uh, final comments of the school committee, item I, Ms. Ward-Layton.
Thanks. It's the end of the year. It's a great time for just reflection and appreciation. Um, and it's, I feel like it's not very, like, fancy and sparkly, but just a blanket thank you to everyone who works from, for Gardner Public Schools. Um, from the teachers to the office staff, the custodial, um, and our tech people. I, I, I could name all the departments, but I, we would be here for a minute. It's, I, I, I try and like see it from the different angles as like an educator and a parent, and then I'm here, and I, it all works. It's all a very well-oiled machine. It's a very, um, collab, we've got a very collaborative, um, community when it comes to this. It's very clear that everyone's here for the benefit of the students, for the community, um, and just making education a priority, and I don't think you could really ask for anything more. So, uh, thank you, everyone, for another wonderful school year, and, um, have a fantastic summer. Take care of yourselves.
Mrs. Hurst.
I had the pleasure of being at graduation. And the theme seemed to be during the speeches was about change is okay and, um, to really do things for yourself, not because you think other people want you to. And, um, I thought about how kind of profound that was because I remember graduating back a zillion years ago that, um, you know, I wish somebody had told me that, you know? And I thought too about what it took to get these students to where they were and how they, you know, and that they're encouraged to think in different ways. And it was just a really, a great day, and it was great to, to see all of them. Um, the students who were here tonight, um, it always makes me feel like, uh, it's kind of a renewed thing, like, okay, I'm really glad I, I'm here and I do this, you know? And I see them as upcoming leaders. Xavier, I mean, just having you here has been great this year. I, um, the student involvement and the presentations tonight were just, it just shows the dedication and the commitment to all the students in this district, and it's just a beautiful thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Paul Levitt.
So the end of the year always is a little bittersweet, right? Because everything is ending, and the kids are happy to be going to the summer, but the ending does mean change and other things that are happening. But, um, yeah, the graduation speeches, I thought it was so great. And I also think it's great that we focus on the kids during graduation and that they're really running the show, right? Because it is about them. Um, and also, I do, I want to thank everybody who puts, does all the work they have to do for Gardner Public Schools, including the teachers, staff, administrators, parents, the kids, everything that they do. Because it is, I, compared to other districts, I mean, we get the, the list of the news articles every day from M A S C, and to see all of the struggles that other districts are dealing with right now, and that we're in such a better space compared to those districts, it's just, it's nice and refreshing. Um, and I'm glad I don't have to deal with most of those problems right now. Um, but no, I'm just, this has been, this year, I think, you know, like you said, it's a grind, but, um, I think it's, we're, everything is falling into place and moving along well, and four and a half more days, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Xavier, any closing thoughts for the school year?
I think it was really fun. I really enjoyed this school year.
Great.
Really gave me a breath of fresh air. A lot of opportunities, a lot of learning. I really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz.
I've had a busy past two weeks attending all the great activities going on in the, in the district. It all started off with the, uh, elementary school band, fourth grade band, got a gold award. And, uh, we celebrated that with your presentation of a certificate from the city and also Representative Stefanik, uh, from the House, the State Legislature, got an award. So that started that. And then a few days later was the deer graduation at the middle school on the fifth grade. And then after that, we had a fantastic high school graduation and a, and a Gardner Academy, a graduation on the same day. So I've been very, very busy and, uh, enjoying every activity. And I think this Thursday, we have a seventh grade promotion coming up. And the little kids getting into the big time, going into the, into the eighth grade and the high school. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Ms. LaFreniere.
Thank you. Um, so I wish everyone a good summer. Uh, also want to thank all the, uh, the teachers and, and, uh, actually, everyone in the school buildings that are actually making our school district such a good school district. That said, uh, they still have a fantastic leader, and it shows. And all the years that I've been on, and I probably say this every year in June, you make our job easy because you do such a good job. And it's very much appreciated, and I think it shows in all our schools, you know, how well, um, so thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Quamier.
It's always hard to go last because you guys cover so much. I agree with all of you. Um, there's been a lot of celebration in the past month, and it's always fun to go and see that, but, uh, you have to remember that there was a lot of hard work to go into those celebrations, and I just appreciate everybody who got those kids to that point where they can be in front of their parents, in front of their, their guardians, their families, and smiling so proud of what they've done. There's a lot of work to go into that. Um, and Jen mentioned earlier, we don't have a lot of choices when we fill out that evaluation. I think we all could write books on how much we appreciate you, Dr. Pellegrino. You do make our job very easy, um, and it makes me very proud to be part of the school committee to know that you're leading the district. Thank you.
Uh, I have a couple of things I'd like to throw out. Uh, first off, I want to congratulate all our graduates from Gardner High School and Gardner Academy, but I'd also like to thank all of the benefactors who established the scholarship funds for the awards night that we had. Over five hundred thousand dollars was given out in scholarships to our graduates this year. And that's just our graduates in the graduating class, not those that can apply each and every year for their four years that they're in high school. We're very blessed in Gardner to be part of a, as generous a community that we are in, that we're able to do that year in and year out for our students and our graduates. Uh, I'd like to, uh, say some congratulations as well. Uh, first to the students who were here from the fourth grade Student Council. I gave them their, you know, their shout-out while they were here, that I was very impressed. Uh, and then they, uh, presented me with a picture of us at the park that they all signed. So this will hang in City Hall, just like the one from last year. So, uh, I want to say thank you to, uh, those students who participated in that. Uh, and to the students from the third grade, uh, two of their groups had their tour, annual tour of City Hall today. And the other two will have their annual tour of City Hall tomorrow. Uh, so if any of you are around tomorrow morning at City Hall at nine-thirty and eleven-thirty, we'll have some third graders here touring the building and seeing how things work here and, uh, having a Q and A session throughout City Hall. Uh, and then for the elementary school band, uh, Mr. Schwartz mentioned that the, uh, fourth grade band took the gold home at the Great East Festival. Uh, and we thought that was great. And then I got a phone call the following, uh, Friday to let me know that the fifth, sixth, and seventh grade band all took home the gold. And the fifth grade and sixth grade chorus took home the gold, and the seventh grade band took home the platinum medal. Uh, excuse me, seventh grade chorus took home the platinum medal, and the other ones, uh, everyone in our music programs at the middle school received gold, except for the seventh grade chorus that received platinum. I was so excited, I left my house and I met the buses at the high school when they dropped them back off after. Now granted, all the students wanted to run back to their parents and get to bed after a day at Six Flags, but I, I couldn't be prouder of those programs that are there. So Bob, we got to figure out what to do with those ones now that we, uh, set the bar high a little bit for the fourth grade band. Uh, just a reminder from the library that our summer reading kickoff is taking place on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth at five P M. on the front lawn of the Gardner Public Library. Uh, this is different than the years past, where before it used to just be the mayor going and reading a story. Uh, we turned it into a festival. So there'll be bouncy houses, students who are participating in the summer recreation program that Director Fort puts on can receive their, uh, T-shirts and registration packets at that summer reading kickoff event. Um, there'll be games, there'll be a whole big thing that Stephanie Young, our new library director, has put together for that one. So if you're looking at a fun way to kick off the summer for our summer reading program, uh, that's going to be again Wednesday, the twenty-sixth at five P M. Uh, just a reminder, there's no meetings of the school committee currently planned for over the summer unless we have to call a special meeting at any time. And then just to talk about a little success story for some of our alumni, uh, our twenty, class of twenty-twenty-two salutatorian, Alex Lushert, and our former student representative, Gino DeVito, uh, began their movie producing this week. Uh, Alex is directing a new, uh, movie, and Gino is actually his assistant producer. So they started filming up in York, Maine this past week. Uh, and they are filming in the area too. There's some stuff in Hubbardson, some stuff in Gardner, stuff, stuff around the area for their new movie, Summer Interlude, that should be hopefully done by the end of the year. So just a quick shout-out to some of our alumni who are, one sat in this room and then another one we heard from at a graduation ceremony before, just to wrap things up that way. And then, uh, because I get to sit up here and see things out there, happy birthday, Mrs. Hillman?
And that's a Wednesday, but the ladies at C A C gave me these earrings, and so now I can tell them I wore them on TV.
Well, happy birthday, Terry, and thank you for everything you do for the school committee. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, any other final questions, comments, concerns? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Motion made by Attorney Paul Levitt, second by Miss LaFreniere, to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. Happy summer, everyone.